Okay, it's the first of the year. Nice work.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. For those of you on Zoom, sorry, we have technical difficulties, but we're here. If everyone would rise for the flag of the evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, and with all the liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening. Happy New Year. Our first town council meeting of 2024, we have all, everyone here, we have all five towns which present and our town staff. And our first order of business is approval of minutes.
Madam Chair, I will, we approve the public hearing minutes from December 12, 2023 as written.
Second, thank you. We have motion in the second and any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Okay, I'm gonna accept the order now. Jessica?
I was not here.
You were not here. John?
Yes.
Jeff?
All right.
Melissa?
Yes.
Aye, motion passes four zero with one exception. Just to be transparent. Up next, we have a public hearing from Zoning.
Madam Chair, I move, we accept the meeting minutes from the public hearing on December 12, 2023 on zoning.
Thank you.
Second, we have motion in the second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Jessica?
I'm staying.
Oh, sorry. John?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes four zero with one exception. Thank you. It's very rare that we have those. Up next, we have town council minutes from the 12th as well.
Just keep it rolling. Madam Chair, we accept the town council meeting minutes dated December 12, 2023 as written.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
We have discussion. I'm sorry.
Oh, yes, sorry.
I just wanted to make a note, and it was probably recorded correctly, but it's actually incorrect. Incorrect information. Under the town manager's report, under the economic development section, it notes that there will be a public engagement scheduled for 1/22 for the downtown revitalization committee. The public hearing, or public workshop, or hearing, whatever you want to call it, is actually on January 18, which we will also announce further details in councilor comments later in the meeting.
Okay.
So, like I said, it was probably recorded correctly, but I just wanted to make sure it was publicly recorded.
Okay, so let's let's redo the motion as amended. No other edits to that.
Nope.
Thank you for getting that, so. Can you add another motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move, we accept the meeting minutes from December 12, 2023. Will be addition of fixing the date from the 22nd to the 18th will be downtown revitalization meeting.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion in the second. All those in favor say aye. Jessica?
I'm staying.
John?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes four zero with one exception. One exception. Up next, we have the treasurer's warrant. Two, one for December. Just the last few weeks, we were off because of holidays.
Correct. Yeah, we just missed the second council meeting.
Okay, so the first warrant we have is dated December 8th. We'll make a motion to sign the treasurer's warrant from December 28, 2023 in the amount of $354,812.91.
Second.
Any discussions? Questions? All those in favor say aye. Jessica?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes by. And next, we have treasurer's warrant from January 4th, motion to sign the treasurer's warrant. For giving forth in the amount of $888,860.56.
Second.
Thank you. Our motion second. Any discussion on this one?
Just had a question about the true Isler. And the $5,000 on the second page of that, I wasn't sure what that was.
I believe that was for Hylo, but let me just double check for you.
What is it?
True Isler.
It's, yeah, it's a weird spell. Sorry, the first page, the bottom of the first page.
Yep.
Yeah, that joke, no. Nope. True Hylo was for, it's legal for him. There's attorney, the Vivian personnel investigation clause.
Got it, okay. Good, Jeff?
Yes.
Any, I have any other questions? All those in favor of signing the treasurer's warrant, say aye. Jessica?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Melissa? Aye.
Aye, motion passes by. Thank you, everyone. Up next, reporting presentation. Peter Hall has joined us on Zoom for our annual audit presentation. There are slides and our supporting documents. Here. Peter, thanks for joining us. Can you? Do you hear me, Seth?
I can. Thank you so much, Mallory. And I understand that everybody has copies of the, the presentation slides and, and the audit report and required communication letters. I was going to, if it's possible, can I share my screen to, or, or would that be helpful, or?
Yeah, I think so. For the people in the room, I think they would be able to see things on the screen as possible, and also for anybody who's playing.
Right, so do I need special permissions to, or can I go ahead and do that? Let me see.
Do you have share screen at the bottom?
I do. I think I can do it.
Do that.
Let's see if this works. Do you folks see the PowerPoint station?
Yeah.
Excellent. All right. And everyone can hear me, okay? Is that correct?
Yes.
Yep.
Excellent. All right, I'll dive right in, and I won't be long. I know, I'm sure you have a lot of important things to discuss this evening, but thank you for the opportunity to join in this evening to discuss this most recently completed financial audit for the town of South Berwick. And I particularly want to extend my thanks for your flexibility in allowing me to, to join remotely this evening. Usually, I, I do this in person, but this worked out great, so I do appreciate that. And final word of thanks, and this is really important, is to thank Jen and all the other folks within town management for all of their assistance in both getting ready for the audit and then in putting up with all my questions as, as we conducted the audit. Just a, a, a great, a great effort on everyone's part, so I, I wanted to extend my thanks to those folks in particular. So let's see here, let's dive into this PowerPoint presentation, and this is very similar to what I've done in the past with this presentation. This is just what we're going to look at in a moment. It's just a very, very high-level summarization of the results of the audit and, and some very high-level key financial information. As we mentioned, you have copies of the actual audit report itself as well as required communication letter. So if at any point you have questions either now or after this evening, please don't hesitate to, to reach out. I'm happy to discuss all things accounting ad nauseam, so. But if we just turn to this, this very high-level presentation, in terms of, of the audit process itself, and, and I have to confess, I, I'm beginning to feel very much like a broken record in, in making this presentation to you folks every year, the, the last three or four years, it's been pretty much the same overall result. Management was extremely well-prepared going into this audit. Started the audit procedures onsite in September. Got the reports pulled together, completed procedures over the last several weeks. And, and the process just really, it, it went very well, as I mentioned. Management was, was very well-prepared and, and very helpful. In terms of the results, of the audit, the single most important piece of information I would share in that regard is that, as you've seen, the, the financial statement audit expresses a clean, unmodified opinion on the financial statements. That essentially means, as I'm sure you know, that the financial statements are materially correct in accordance with general accepted accounting principles. Additionally, I, I would point out that even though this audit was not the sort of audit, either a compliance audit or an internal control audit, in which a, a more significant extent of internal control and systems testing would, would otherwise be, be performed. We do do some degree of systems testing and internal control testing, even in the conduct of a ordinary, regular financial statement audit. And if in the process of doing that testing, we were to come across any issues with the town's internal controls or procedures that, you know, rose to a certain level of, of concern, either to the level of a significant deficiency or even worse, what's known as a material weakness, we'd be required to communicate that fact with you in writing, and as you've seen in the, in the communication letters, no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in the town's internal controls were reported, and that's frankly consistent with quite a number of years now in a row. So that, that also speaks very highly to the systems that are in place and, and the, the financial management structure that, that you have. That being said, you know, there are always things that, that can be looked at in terms of additional recommendations or, or thoughts in terms of things that could be improved upon or done differently going forward. And you'll see in the required communications letters that we, we did note a couple of recommendations in terms of procedures to consider going forward. One with, and both with respect to the, the the ongoing process, and it really is a process of continually monitoring existing processes and procedures and tweaking them when and if circumstance, circumstances might warrant. And one of those areas would, would be with respect to your procurement policies, and the other would be with respect to establishing at this point in time, perhaps a, a regular protocol whereby various employee benefit plans that the town offers its, its staff can be reviewed internally for ongoing compliance with the terms of those agreements. This is in the context of the retirement health savings plan matter that Jen and her team discovered this past fall, and, and frankly, kudos to them for having, not only for having discovered this, but also for all the work they've done in addressing and correcting it. Not a material effect, you know, to the town. But the thought here is simply that if there's an ongoing process that's sort of codified that future additions of town management will have that as a protocol that they would follow going forward. But, but those were really the, the two, the two things that I'd wanted to comment on in terms of systems and procedures. So the next, the, the remainder of this presentation really is just a very high-level review of some of the key financial statement balances that the town carries as of this past fiscal year. And one thing that I, I always want to mention when we're having this discussion, and, and this may be very redundant at this point, but I'll mention it anyway, just as a reminder. Anytime any, anyone's looking at a set of municipal financial statements, it's important to keep in mind that under general accepted accounting principles for, for municipalities, there really are, are essentially two types of financial statements that are being presented. The, there are what are known as the government-wide financial statements, which are the highest level in terms of, you know, less detail being entirely comprehensive of the financial picture and condition of, of the municipality, with everything kind of throwed into one big pot. And that's, that's sort of one, one framework that, that is used, and then contrasting that to fund financial statements, which are more detailed, and they're prepared on the level, or at, at the level of detail of individual funds, or at least groups of funds. As, as you all know, South Berwick, like any other town, has a number of individual funds within your accounting and financial reporting structure that are used to track the resources that have been set aside or raised for particular purposes or uses. So really, two different ways of, of, of looking at the financial condition of any municipality. And, and the other thing to keep in mind, too, is that the very basis of accounting that is used in preparing these two different frameworks is itself different in that the government-wide financial statements are prepared on what's known as the full accrual basis of accounting, which high-level is the same basis of accounting that General Motors would use, for example, if there were any big corporate entity. Essentially, that type of accounting ensures that all assets and liabilities of the entity or of the town are brought on to the financial statements, whether or not they're actual, actually are, are events that took place in the form of cash or not. And contrast that with fund financial statements, which are generally prepared on a different basis of accounting that is much closer to pure cash basis accounting, which is the type of accounting you might use if you're running a small business out of your home, where all you're doing is looking at and recognizing events and transactions that take place when cash changes hands. So, different, different framework entirely, but just wanted to underscore that as you, as you go through, you know, reading the, the audited financial statements. So with that said, this first slide is just, again, a very high-level presentation of the town's government-wide financial position at the end of FY 2023. You'll see that your current assets, essentially your cash, your investments, your, your taxes and accounts receivable, prepaid expenses, that category was subtotal grew by about $700,000. Your capital assets, essentially your property, plant and equipment, infrastructure, land, and so forth, actually shrank by about $300,000. Most of the increase in the current asset category was in the form of cash, but as we'll see, the town had a, had a very strong year financially, and, as, as you would expect, that resulted in, in higher cash balances at the end of the year. On the other hand, the reduction in your, your capital assets is, is the result of, yes, you did acquire, or put in service, some new items of capital assets. But the current, the current year's depreciation that was recorded more than offset that, and that resulted in the reduction in that net number by about $300,000. On the, on the other side of the balance sheet, looking at your current liabilities, liabilities that are due to be paid within a 12-month period from the balance sheet date, that total shrank by about $400,000, with most of that reduction in the form of lower accounts payable balances on the books as of the end of the year. Your long-term liabilities also shrank primarily as a result of the continued paydown of various notes, bonds, and leases payable. The end result of all that is that your total net position, which is essentially the difference between your total assets plus your total liabilities, grew by $1.6 million. And you'll see when you, you read through the financial statements themselves that we, we carve out different categories of net position, speaking to any limitations on the ability of the town to readily use those resources. And the, the most liquid and unfettered component of your total net position is what's known as unrestricted net position. That's really the portion that you're free to, to spend and use as, as the town wishes. That component also grew by about $900,000. So certainly very strong financial performance for the year. On this next slide, now we're into the fund financial statements, and as, as you all know, talk to any municipality, town manager, select board. Typically, the funds that most people are most concerned about with good reason is the general fund. That's where the lion's share of the town's activities are transacted, and that, that really tells most of the story every year. And what we'll see here is that total assets in the general fund grew by about $700,000, again, mostly in the form of higher cash balances. Total liabilities shrank by $300,000, mostly with respect to reduced accounts payable balances at the end of the year. And that resulted in about a $1 million increase in your total general fund balance. That's a very, very strong result, and, and continued places the town in an even better financial position and footing going forward. Just as we talked about within the, the government-wide net position, how we carve out different categories or components of net position based on the presence or absence of limitations or stipulations on how that, those net resources can be used. We do the same thing at the fund financial statement level. And when, when we look at a general fund, fund balance, the, the component of that that people are usually most keen on, on focusing on, again, with good reason, is the undesignedated portion of that general fund balance. That's the portion of your general fund that, that isn't encumbered for specific future uses. It's not committed in any fashion. It's not restricted, and it's not limited in terms of the nature of the resources. And that, that component of your general fund, fund balance also grew by about $900,000. So just, I know, kind of, you know, repeating myself at this point, but continued financial good health, if, if you will, as of the end of FY 2023. Now, if we go to this next slide, this is a horribly gross oversimplification of a lot of information. Again, the details, all of the, the audited financial statements. But this is a, a real compressed summarization of all of the other individual funds which are presented and carried by the town on its financial statements. Um and this includes uh your, your roads, project capital, uh capital project fund, your, your TIF fund. Uh and then all the variety of uh somewhat smaller uh individual special revenue and capital projects and permanent funds. Uh that the town holds. Um but for our purposes tonight, I just collapsed them all into, into one set of numbers. Um and if you look at the, the aggregate, you'll see that overall, there really. Wasn't a whole lot of change on a net basis compared to the prior year. Uh your total assets held in these other governmental funds uh fell by about two hundred thousand dollars. Your total uh liabilities uh that were owed. Uh by these other funds fell by about three hundred thousand dollars. Um and so the uh uh net effect of that is that the total fund balances that are comprised in all these different. Individual funds actually grew by about a hundred thousand dollars. Uh so no, not, not a whole lot of change taking place there. On this last slide, now we're, we're again looking at the uh, at the general fund from the, a, a budgetary uh perspective. And again, that's something that, you know, most, most uh. Users of the financial statements, most constituents and, and uh town elected officials and town management uh are, are most concerned with. Uh i- is to see how, how the town performed against uh the legally adopted uh budget that, that uh. Was put in place to govern its financial activities for FY twenty twenty-three. What I've done here is summarized your actual results versus budget and also. Comparing those actual results to the prior year's actual results. And at the end of the day, and again, this is all uh spelled out in much greater detail within the, within the financial statements. But the budget that was adopted for FY twenty twenty-three actually called for or allowed for. Uh the use of undesignedated fund balance to the tune of seven hundred thousand dollars. So essentially what we did is we said. We, we, we want to spend X, um we're gonna raise uh revenue. That's equal to X less seven hundred thousand dollars and that difference is going to come out of fund balance. Uh the actual results that uh the town saw were, were far in excess of, of those results. Uh such that your actual revenues, less your actual expenditures, uh came in at just over a million dollars. Um so that's a, uh that's an incredible performance uh in terms of actual versus budget. In fairness, um I've been working with the town of South Berwick for a number of years now and. And, and this type of favorable performance, I think, is, is pretty consistent with what uh the town has. At least in recent years, has, has been able to accomplish, really as a result of a, I think, a couple of. And, and certainly, uh Tim and Jen could speak to this more in more detail if needed, but. I think a couple of key factors, uh from my perspective, looking in on, from the outside. Um one is conservative budgeting. Um i- I think it's always uh, you know, better to be conservative than overly aggressive. Um when setting a budget for any entity. Um and, but coupled with uh what's very clear uh to be very careful and close monitoring. Of your actual results against the, that, those budgeted amounts as you, as you go through the course of the year. Um and those, those two factors, I think qualitatively are, are really what drives this uh. Uh positive performance. Um and then for reference, I, I did include the prior year's actual results. Which is about six hundred thousand dollars to the good. So twenty twenty-three, by, by, really by any stretch or any perspective, rather. Uh, you know, turned out to be a very strong year. Um and I, I guess I would close by, at this point, by just noting that I think the, where that puts the town is certainly in a very strong position as you. Granted, we're, we're halfway through FY twenty twenty-four at this point. Um so, you know, who knows what twenty twenty-four will bring, but certainly a strong position to be bringing into FY twenty twenty-four and a good track record of, of uh. Of uh prudent uh financial management and performance. That's what I had, had prepared to speak to, but I'm more than happy to dive into anything or answer questions that anyone may have.
Thank you, Peter. Um I know you said at the beginning, you feel like a broken record, um but I think we welcome that. Because we're in good shape because of clear year after year. So I've always had, so we just have to have you here and find out. What we already know, which is that we're in really good shape financially. Thank you. Um. Question from anybody? Okay. Peter, thank you so much for joining us. I'm glad you were able to join Zoom. Thanks as always.
Thank you, everybody. I hope you have a great rest of your meeting and a, and a great week and, and stay out of the rain and wind.
We'll try. Thank you.
Thanks. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Sam, for all of your great work as always, for. We're, we always seem to come out in a really good financial position every year, at least in my experience. So, thank you. All right, um public comment. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to anything on the agenda? Uh yeah, if you would just move to the podium, state your name.
Uh Sam Plankstrom, three eighty Main Street. Um it's actually related to that presentation, but um I was just wondering if that, if were, those, those slides were a part of a larger. Audit document that is on the, online or something?
It is online.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Anyone in the room? Nobody?
It'll also be in the annual report too.
That's required by law.
Um anyone on Zoom have anything? Okay, all right, we'll move on from public comments um to unfinished business. Uh before we um tackle unfinished business item number one, um the council would just like to do a quick executive session um. That I know is not scheduled, but we can call an executive session whenever we want. So um. I'll just make a motion on subject to MRS A, Oral Biotic Day. Um like town council, um would like to convene an executive session really quickly. Thank you. I'm going to second. All of the favor say aye. Jessica, aye. John?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Motion passed by zero. We will be very briefly, because we'll not be long. Executive session, I thought.
Samuel, sing a song for us?
Um.
No, I, I sing too much.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to come out of executive session. It's seven oh nine PM. Can I get a second? All those in favor say aye. Jessica?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye.
Hello. Aye. Aye, motion passed. Peter, thank you. Okay, now we can move on and finish business number one, uh action on appointment to the zoning board of appeal.
Madam Chair, I move that we appoint Sam Plankstrom to the zoning board of appeals. With the appointed term that will expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Is this a shortcut? Is that right?
I think it's, it's filling a short one.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion. Hang on a second.
Second.
Second. Um. All those in favor say aye. Jessica?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
I'm abstaining because I'm not there for the interview. So motion passed as four zero with one attention. Thank you, Sam. Uh, thank you, Tony. Um.
Welcome aboard.
All right, um up next, we got unfinished business number two, public hearing, both things. I was very excited to see this in the end of half, um the note from Bill.
Yeah, so I had the clerk check the um. Records and logs and minutes to make sure there was nothing that she could find and. Barbara, you want to elaborate? There was nothing wrong.
It's really unusual, but you could set a public hearing and not have a date and a time. Have low and behold.
So um I did talk to Billy, said all the town would have done it. Uh and I know Barbara had, you know, had a. Thought about this, about the date and time thing. So I talked to Phil today and asked him a quick question. He said, well, I get that, but he said it wouldn't make sense on a normal ordinance where you're just changing an ordinance, having a simple. Public hearing or packing ordinance or. He said, if you got obviously a big thing like a budget or something like that, you're gonna wanna specify a start time. Not necessarily an end time, but a start time. So what most towns do now is when they, they just make it part of their agenda item. And they put it as the first thing on the agenda. So for many states, it's six thirty, the first thing on the agenda is gonna be the public hearing. People know to come at six thirty.
And then if we don't have public hearings, then it doesn't matter.
What's that?
And that there's no public hearings.
If there's no public comment, we don't have to sit here for half an hour.
It's just like a section on our agenda, right? Like, kind of like how we have public comments or like birthports and presentations sometimes.
Right, so, so at, at the top, you go, you do your own call.
Yep.
And before you do anything else, approval of all of it, and then you do public hearing on packing zoning ordinance.
Cool.
And if it only lasts five minutes, it lasts five minutes, and you, then you go on to the approval of all of it. Last two hours, the last two hours. You go on to approve the following. It's the same exact thing we do with the budget public hearing. We set it up as the very first thing. We go through it. If there's no questions, that way they don't approve. So that's the answer.
And so then that prevents us from the awkward situation we had a couple of weeks ago where.
Putting away some time, correct.
Okay, awesome. Thank you for um with the intent.
Cool.
Think that will help us. So no action on this, as though it's just an FYI for us.
Yep.
Um, next, uh town hall RFQ, RFP shortlist. Um so I know, I'll just give everything, Ken, I'll, I'll hand it over to you. Um we received. Four responses for the RFQP for um the town hall renovation project. Um and Ken is urging, I'll, I'll let you go.
So we received four companies uh to call K G West, I put all of them onto you. Um Ken has a copy of them, and so we have to decide tonight. One of three actions, you would either decide to move forward with all four on the shortlist. There's only four. Um you could move, take an, you could take an action, not accept any of them, or you could accept one of them. Or two, whatever you want to do. My recommendation, uh talking to Ken, looking at them, they all seem really well, really good, put together. Um you know, talking a lot of time, I would, I would just include all four on a shortlist and see what we get.
I, I, I personally like to hear the results of all four of them. They all. Very well qualified. I'd like to hear what they have.
Yeah.
I would just need a motion to accept all four of the RFQP's.
Okay.
They put on the short, or shortlist.
Council, any other questions? Thank you. Uh I want to make a motion um to accept all four applications for the RFQP um to be put on the shortlist. That includes place where all design project, Oakwood, Sotheby's and McHenry are good for sure.
Second.
Thank you. Motion a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Jess?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Aye, zero. Okay, and then um, um moving on, unfinished business number four, same topic, town hall project, but specifically. Um a change to our schedule for the next few weeks.
So I don't know if I sent this to you. Actually, I don't remember if I did or not. But that's the schedule. Uh Ken, I thank you for taking the opportunity to time. Uh Ken has done, again, a lot of work and I want to thank him for this. Um he updated the schedule and ran that by me, so I just need you to approve the updated schedule. And Ken is here to certainly talk on that.
Does anyone have any questions? Is there anything?
I was just wondering what exactly the changes were, because I was looking for the old schedule and I wasn't sure what was changed or maybe why it was changed.
The, the date, because we were gonna originally do the shortlist on the twenty-sixth of December, the meeting on the twenty-sixth. We didn't have that meeting.
Okay.
So we had to bump everything back to, because we can't do the shortlist. Without your authorization. I called Bill Sausch and asked attorney. So you had to do that tonight, and then from here, we'll put the shortlist out. Then we'll do, so then everything's gonna bump down a couple of weeks.
So the timeframe's all changed the same other than the start date realistically?
Uh Ken, yeah. Oh, Ken.
Ken Weston, Nineteenth Spring Street. Um I think we did add a little bit.
Ken Weston, Nineteenth Spring Street. Um, I think we did add a little bit of time for the interviews because it falls on the vacation weeks for Maine and New Hampshire. So scheduling those interviews, um, you know, just sort of accommodating people, giving you two weeks to get the four interviews in. Now, if you're going to schedule them at a workshop and do all four at once, um, sometimes that's how it happens. Um, you know, if there are conflicts, you might do two workshops and two at one, two at another. So it just gave you more flexibility.
Beautiful. Thank you.
Any other questions? Be good. Okay. Um, all right, I'll go ahead and make a motion to accept the changes to the schedule for the town hall project, RFQP, as.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Thanks, Ken and Tim for incorporating flexibility.
Yes, thank you for all the continued hard work, Ken.
Um, all right, we have a motion and a second on the people. All those in favor say aye. John?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Melissa? Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Five zero. Okay, um, moving on to new business number one, legislative update. Um, so, um, Representative Roberts had reached out to us a while ago, trying to squeeze into a meeting in December, and we were a little slow to respond, so we kind of missed her because the session has come in, but she, um, did share with us, um, an updated Sunday, um, um, supporting documents, um, with updates as to things we expect to happen over the next legislative session. Is there anything else that we should cover or talk about on that? Anyone want to highlight anything? Representative Roberts was not able to join us this evening because of the, the session has begun, so she's in August, in August. Okay, any question? Okay, we can move on from number one. Thank you, Representative Roberts, for sharing that with us. Um, and apologies for being slow response. Um, and then up next, new business number two, twenty twenty four Spirit of America Award. So the town council as a body, we pick the local person project or group to receive the twenty twenty four Southford Spirit of America Award, and typically, at our annual town meeting in May, we typically, um, present that award for the previous year. So for example, in May, we'll present the twenty twenty three Spirit of America Award and so on. Um, so we submit, uh, we submit by the thirtieth. Um, the council, we all receive that information, and essentially, we just need to, um, appoint or to be another work of the award by the end of the day. So I think for this, we just need a motion.
No, I don't need anything right now.
Because we don't have, we don't have anyone yet.
Right, just what I, so I just put this out there, just put it out there to give you, start the process, start thinking about it. Um, be thinking about having it, you know, putting it probably in March or something on
Okay.
the council agenda, come back with something.
Cool, okay.
If you have something, send it out or bring it back to me, email to me, so I can get it back on the agenda.
Okay.
And we'll try to get some suggestions too, and see what we find.
Great. Um, all right, so the council keep our eyes out for, um, submissions and for the public. If there's anyone, um, that you would, you know, think worthy of being nominated, I guess, feel free to reach out to us and share that. Okay, I think that's all of our formal business, um, town manager report.
All right. The highway department, the bridge on Belmont Road, uh, there was a temporary steel plate. They need to put a temporary steel plate on until they can put a new top on in July.
That's Belmont Road?
Yep. They, we scheduled to put a new bridge, a new top on that. It's a wooden bridge, wooden top, and that's kind of get a tire. Um, Hooper Sands Road, down to One Lane, due to the river road on the embankment. Jay found out, was out checking roads, cool goes to him, he goes out, checks the roads early in the morning. Uh, they cleaned up twelve trees from December, December storm. Uh, they're still cleaning up from the other storm the other day. Uh, today, they made sure all the storm drains were open, sidewalks are cleared before the storm tonight. Uh, the sidewalk machine was broke. They were able to fix it and, uh, did sidewalks done, took a little longer, that was a delay. Police department had eight arrests, eight accidents, one hundred and seven traffic stops. Uh, the animal control officer had extended his retirement until a new ACO is hired and trained. Uh, the chief is looking forward, uh, in case the supervisor was brought on medically for a long period of time, so he's hosting oral boards. The NSA questions for an interim lieutenant, interim sergeant, in the event a supervisor was to be out for an extended period. Um, a representative from Sleetshire has been assigned to the Southborough Police Department. Will be a great resource for the area for mental health issues, substance abuses, and to assist residents in need. That was a grant they got, and they were one of the first police departments in the state to have a mental health caseworker on duty, coming on duty forty hours a week. That casework will not only be available for, she'll be at the police station, she'll be able to respond to police emergency calls, medical calls, and also to help any of the staff with any issue they have. This is a great asset and certainly very front of the chief to be the foreleader in the group to get this for our town and our people.
And didn't he mention when he was speaking to us that it's all, that they will also be available to other surrounding police forces that they need?
Yeah.
Correct, Rowan Elliott.
Yep, all the other, any other agencies within our town. So he stepped up and offered to do the grant program and be the first tester, and so I think it's going to be excellent. They can go on on calls, but just, it's cutting edge stuff. Uh, the fire department responded to four hundred and eighty-three calls for service in twenty twenty-three. That was seven more calls than they had the year before. Department conducted over eleven hundred hours of training and over two months of advanced training at the Red Bond, uh, including live fire sessions. And the firefighters have during fire prevention week, taught fire safety to nearly six hundred students at all grade levels. Again, great stuff. Coenforcement did one building permit, uh, three permanent inspections, three violations. In twenty twenty-three, they did a hundred and forty-three building permits were issued, six hundred, six hundred and twenty-four inspections were conducted, fifty-nine permanent permits issued, needed for permanent inspections combined. It's certainly been busy. Under planning, two applications in front of planning board right now, thirty lot, thirty-five lots of division, and an automotive repair service, uh, a midlife clinic will be in front of the board soon.
At the library, they held a doormat making class, and they had great turnout leave, and said the doormats came out good, too. They're being creative and doing the D Y I classes over there, so I think it's great. Um, one of the new ones is computer for the absolute beginner. Uh, they've heard seniors come in and not even know how to use the mouse or turn it on. Um, so they are starting right from the very basics to help anyone out who might need that. So that is starting this Thursday from noon to one. The recreation, um, department has a lot of new programming that is starting right now, and they're in the process of putting together three new programs, chair yoga for seniors, open gym night, and a gun stock ski night. And I do have a flyer that I want to hand out. Um, Nikki put this together, I think, yeah. Nikki put this together, and she actually did put it out on Facebook, and I just thought it was very well put together. There is a lot of information here on this one sheet. Um, like, last year, Pataharap Hill was open twenty-one days, and they sold just shy of fourteen hundred tickets. I think that's great. You know, they just, she really took the time to put this together for all the different programs that they have, um, giving, you know, thank yous to the sponsors, and I just, I just wanted to share that because I thought she did a great job with that.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Uh, the senior program had a New Year's lunch last week, and they had a musician while they were there. Their next large event is a bingo lunch on the seventeenth. Assessing, we have hired Brittany Howard, and she is the new assessing assistant. She started just yesterday. She comes to us from Kennyburg. Um, Brenna has just finished the sales return, where the sales and values and the ratios from July first, twenty twenty-two, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three are reported to the state. K R T will be sending out postcards this week. We now have three gentlemen that will be working out in the field instead of two. So their new goal for the tax, for the data collection is to be done by February first of next year. Then they're going to be working on all the tax tables and getting all that situated. So just because we have the three-year spread out for the payments, they're going to get it done in a sooner amount of time. They had their first kickoff meeting yesterday, so that was good news to hear. In the town clerk's office, we hired Candace Thompson, who actually comes to us from the recreation department. She has been working with them for quite a few years, and she started in the clerk's office on January second. And in the clerk's office, they have issued thirty-three hundred transfer station stickers. And we have four resumes in hand right now for the town clerk's position. So we're going to start doing those interviews shortly. At the transfer station, uh, Jeff Maury will now be the interim director until further notice. We've got that position posted. Economic development, they had downtown revitalization plan committee last night, and they made a very nice flyer as well. Do you want to pass that one down to? So, as Melissa stated, thank you, um, Thursday, January eighteenth, we are going to do the public workshop for the downtown revitalization, um, action plan. That'll be here, um, third floor of town hall. There'll be precautions and childcare, so no reason not to. And I, in the last few weeks, have had eight business meetings and forty staff meetings. We have completed the first round of budget meetings, um, with department heads. We'll be starting the second round next week. Um, there's, you know, so many different pieces that, you know, just I, me and Tim work on together, all the wages, all the employee benefits, administrative portion of it, as well as meeting with the department heads. So it's also an extra busy time a year for me with month end, quarter end, year end. Um, so we also did get the W two's and ten ninety-nines were completed and mailed out last Friday. Uh, we also have, I worked on a draft budget schedule, um, today that Tim and I haven't had a chance to go over yet. We should have that for you for the next council meeting. We are doing all the employee annual reviews. We have been doing that for the past few weeks. That's scheduled to be completed by the end of this week. We also have to start thinking about the annual town report for the twenty twenty-three. So if you want to think about that, and, uh,
for that to bear as well. We don't have a date on that yet, so to put people behind the march, but just wanted to put it out there. So, thank you.
It's okay, we'll have, we'll do anything.
Um, so under the administration portion, for me, the town manager, I had ten business meetings and forty-five staff meetings. Uh, clerk's office has reinstalled new carpet. I was desperately indeed falling apart. It's been all repainted. Uh, the town clerk bought a brand new ergonomic desk just as she's leaving or retiring. Um, I finally told us, Barbara, keep holding your breath, you're going to pass out. Stop it, I'll get you again. My God. Um, so I will tell you, if you haven't seen it, stop in, look at the clerk's office. It looks completely.
It already did. It looked very, I was in that.
Park is very, Barbara's old desk is gone, and it opened it all wide open. I'll watch the curtains. We didn't even realize they were white curtains. We thought they were brown. I'm just kidding. Um, but the, and then, uh, uh, Carrie came in and painted it all, and the place looks, it looks like a brand new chip, paint curtains and carpets and stuff, and looks great. And we're, so we're going to end up, we're going to get one more ergonomic desk for the deputy clerk's position, so all the furniture matches and do that. So that worked out really good. Um, we've been, I've been doing contract negotiations with the police department. I finally have a first draft ready to go. Um, I, I didn't get it done. We were supposed to meet tomorrow, today, tomorrow. We had to postpone it. I just didn't have a chance to get it all done. And once we get closer to that, I'll, we'll come back and I'll present to you what I have. Uh, we have, we met with a clinic recycling regarding the bail, the new bail we bought at the transfer station. We've had several issues with it. Um, and the potential exists that we may end up having to trade that in and do something different, right? What no one realized, at the same time, I was standing there looking at this, he said, the plastic bale is going to fail, it's all cracked. So the plastic bale is at the end of its life as well. So right now, we're looking at potential to try to figure out the best path forward for the transfer station and all the major equipment we have there. I have Casella, as long as we get through the storm tonight, but Casella is supposed to come in tomorrow and go up to the transfer station with us to do an evaluation. Um, you know, the peso uh, recycling has changed considerably. I think from when we started this in nineteen eighty-five, I think we have to be innovative to look at some different efficiencies on how we can work the transfer station to better serve the public and is still cost efficient. So we're going to try to get there with that. Um, so that's, that's on the agenda. Uh, I had a meeting with the softball group, um, in regards to the needs for their fields and scheduling and whatever else we need to do. A great meeting. Uh, we requested, they requested a follow-on meeting with, uh, Jay and Council James, but of course, Council James is not a council, when a council meeting is just a softball game. So they're excited. We, we didn't realize that they were kind of in the background, but we now brought them to the forefront. We want to make them, they're happy to be here. Um, the main department of transportation has posted the tool bridge on Dover Alley Road that goes over to Dover, and it's, the pilings are failing on the bottom. And so they posted thirty tons, uh, but they may close it at its entirety. They're waiting for spring to do a, to do a evaluation on it, but they'll let us know. Um, we reached out to Yalkam also for a meeting, uh, for January twenty-fifth to discuss the ambulance contract, the new contract coming for this year. Uh, I had a, we had a woman came in, a senior citizen who lives right here on Main Street, no names. Uh, was very concerned about the traffic patterns, the traffic lights. Were they going to unpack, was traffic bike going to go in front of her house? She was planning on staying here the rest of her life. Her husband, um, she had only heard the rumor, she never participated in any of that. She finally came in and saw me, and when she left, she was in tears and gave me hugs and saying thank you. And I said, no, all good, we, we got it. So, well, you know, she's, she feels a lot better about the whole issue and how we're going to do it. And I said, this, we're so far away from getting it done yet, you'll be, you know, you, especially you people are directly affected. The biggest thing was, she, where her driveway, she pulled out in the intersection, and I told her, I said, it'll make it a lot safer for you, and I explained why, and she was very happy with that. So again, what I determined from that meeting is we still have some education to do for the public, and we always will have. Uh, surprised, I know you're going to be surprised in this, but we've been working on the budget. Like, no shock you completely, but um, we reviewed the year and worked this compensation cost, and I've been working with Jen. We're pushing safety in twenty twenty-four. Um, compensation has gone up. We've had a pretty big jump in that, but it was a perfect storm. The storm was that, um, just go ahead and tell them what kind of drunk, what's going to bring a price up.
We had a decent raise last year for across the staff. We have increased, um, some positions, and we had a few injuries. So it's a perfect storm of those three things combining together, unfortunately, is a substantial increase.
So, uh, we're, we're putting, we put together a Southborough Emergency Management Team, an action team, and it's two laid, two levels. So it's the interior level, which is myself, Jen, Jay, police chief, fire chief, Ray, um, the people who make the plan and operate it. Then the exterior side of that is a whole bunch of other department heads and people and contacts. Um, so we recently added John, uh, Calvary to that. Now, this week, we added Heather West, the transportation director from NSAD thirty-five. We reached out to Verloc Academy. We've added Jason Murray to the facility department. All those people are on a hot text list. We give them updates of the storm and everything, uh, and they're very appreciative of being involved with that and being included in that. Um, I will, when I get back to my office, I will be sending you out, um, my annual evaluation form. So please do that, and then get that to the chair, and the chair will review my, um, evaluation of me at some point. Um, the fire department has a, the new tanker is back, or the old tanker is back. Yeah, I'll just give, give you there. Madam, clerk, there's some. I'll give you one to put into the front here. When I did, I'll get that tonight.
I'll give you that.
So, um, the first picture is, shows you, and you saw that, that before was the side running board you see now, who drive a sidecar, and it has, it was fixed. You see now the driver's side, where it was fixed. On page two, you see the front rubber rail, how it was run it out, now has it repaired. Page three, you see the square tubing under carriage and now you see it all replaced and coated. Number four, page four was the driver's side rubber rail. And you see the new rubber rail. What you see is that black stuff is the undercoating treatment that they put on it. Office aside rubber rail, it was all corroded and exposure on it is all new. Then you can see the tailboard rear side and that's all been redone. And the last piece was the rear section of the tailboard below the tank frame and how that was put in a brand new piece.
Looks much better.
So that's back in service and that's here.
That only took, that didn't take that long.
No, multiple weeks and they finished a little high of schedule. So I got something in a quadrant and I need some guidance from the council. One of my department heads has decided to accept the resignation from one of his employees and I said, no. Just like I said, no to you. Don't think I'd let you off of here. But I'll let you in on this. This is presented to Chief Ruger today and it's from Lieutenant Jeffrey Upton. It's with mixed emotions, but I write this letter formally announce to you my intention to retire from the South Fork Police Department. I have been in the process of position of looking at the position of assistant director for the Maine School Safety Center. As of last night, I had been off of the position and have accepted. My last day with the department will be January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. I want to take this opportunity to thank you and the town of South Fork for the support and opportunities given to me since being hired by the town in nineteen ninety-five. When I began my career in law enforcement with South Fork in two thousand, I never envisioned the impact it would have on my life. As I begin a new chapter professionally, I know that the training and experiences I have from working with this police department have given me the tools to be successful. As I approached the final few years of my career, I thought I had a plan, although that plan quickly changed in the fall of twenty twenty-one. At a time when I believed I had reached the top of my professional ladder, you trusted me and allowed me to challenge myself in new ways as you lieutenant. Working together, I truly believe that we elevated an already excellent agency and carried it through a difficult time. Your leadership and mentoring had given me the confidence to go out of my comfort zone and try something new. I believe the South Fork Police Department being one of the best in the state of Maine and New England. I cannot emphasize enough that I'm not leaving this team because I was looking for something new. I'm taking a new opportunity because this department has provided me with the tools needed to move on to this new adventure. I am confident that under your direction, the South Fork Police Department will continue to thrive as a top agency. With extreme gratitude, Lieutenant Jeffrey Upton. I don't want to accept it and I'm sure you don't, but with all due respect, I will with great regrets accept his resignation and ask you to do the same.
Of course, yeah, that's a huge honor, but it sounds like a great opportunity for him. We wish him well. Do we need formal action to, no?
What's that?
Do we need formal action or?
No, but I would like you to just do one anyway, like we did novice, just to say no to him. Just let him know. He was told to watch the tape or come back and watch this tonight, but he, uh, this came kind of, you know, he, he had looked into it, but he really wasn't, his name got submitted. It's a huge position in the state. It's, he, he was interviewed for. It's the, you know, number two for the school safety center for the state of Maine. And I, you know, he has been a dynamic S R O. He teaches S R O at the Maine State Police Academy. He's had a great, he's, he's gone to the legislature twice with ideas with his program and it seemed like a natural fit when he moved the director up, the director who was there left. And he reached out to Jeff and said, we really need to do great things. And, you know, we'll miss him, but he'll do great things for the educational community, the kids in the state of Maine, keeping the kids safe.
So when you have a great feeder program, this is what happens.
Yep.
We had a great feeder program. He has been fantastic for this community. I'm gonna vote no. I'm gonna, no matter how it is, but. He has been an incredible asset. He was a great S R O and yeah, he's going to work to keep the kids safe in the entire state. So as much as I hate to see him leave, it's incredible for the rest of the state.
I, I know he told me, one of the things that he talked about in his interview, he, he told the panel, the Public Safety Commission, the interview room, one of the things he wanted to do was create a two-way communication link program that any school, any time of the day could text one of these two, either director or, or Jeff. By calling or email, if they had a situation arising and say, we need help, you know, not a nine-one call, but a, but a secondary piece that like, you know, how, where do we need to get this help from? What is this? What is that? And Jeff has already started to work on implementing a two-way communication system so that every school, every administrator, every teacher will have a link to the main safety school system right on their phone. And, and that's a technical, that's what we're going to miss with Jeff. Jeff is, both Jeff and Chief Ruger have great vision. When you have Chief Ruger, who is one of the first departments in the state to get us a full-time psychologist onboard. And then you got Lieutenant Upton, who practically wrote the S R O program for the schools and teaches it every year for the cabinet. Like you say, it's, we're, we're very fortunate to have great staff.
So I guess I'll go ahead and make a motion to accept Lieutenant Judge Upton's resignation with regret, but also best wishes.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. I'll have a favor say aye, Jeff. John?
No.
Jeff?
Aye.
No.
Aye, motion passed at three, two.
That is everything I have. My minute is two-four.
Cool. We are at Council member comments. Jessica.
It's law enforcement appreciation day, so I just, I'm appreciative of the entire department, Chief Ruger, and the others, confident. And every day to do work that we don't see at the hours where we are working with our families safely and it's appreciated.
Thank you. Tom?
My four-year campaign for cake pans from the library has proved successful. I got a notification over the Christmas holiday that one of my neighbor's sons checked out a cake pan to make cakes at their house. It was a very tight quality cake. So it has been successful. This has been huge, spent forty years.
Do you know what? Which pan it was?
It was a Christmas tree. And yes, it was a Christmas tree and they made them cupcakes. It looked excellent. I didn't get any, but it looked excellent. But so we are good there and that's it. I'm, I'm done. I'm successful.
Okay. Jeff?
Sorry.
Curiosity is killing me. Who won the door decorating contest?
Wasn't us.
It was Dawn with her peeking snowman.
Michael, hold on. My other question, great works regional land trust. They had a deadline of December thirty-first. It was a budgeted out of us for two hundred and fifty thousand for the fiscal, for twenty twenty-three. We're now into twenty twenty-four. How does that affect us and our budgeting? Does it just roll over? Do they get more time? Where do we stand on that?
They did get more time and Tim is going to be here at the next meeting to give an update. Their, their deadline was extended and they are pretty confident they're going to get there. So we're still on the same fiscal year for us and it's coming at it undesignedated, so.
And then my last thing is a challenge to all of our administration. Stop using so much ink.
Should have been here before we got left off.
And I don't have anything this evening, other than just having a year.
Madam Karen, who we go into executive session, one M R S A, four oh five, six A personnel.
Thank you.
Again.
So we have a motion in the second. I'll have a favor saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, Pan, I will, I will email you.